Afternoon, everyone. If I could have your attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It is so nice to see all of you on our first meeting in the new year. Very excited about what 2020 holds for the city of Tifton. This community is on the rise, and we have got just an incredible year ahead of us. I'm so excited to be able to serve with these four gentlemen, with our city administrative staff, and it's just going to be a great year for Tifton. We do have agendas in the back by Stephen here on the podium. If you'd like to grab one and follow along, if you haven't already grabbed one, please help yourself. And the first item of our agenda this evening, after the calling to order, is the swearing in of three of us for our new term. So I'm going to call on Councilman Jack Falk, Councilman M.J. Hall, and I will all be sworn in. So Rob will be sworn in individually.
Yes.
Is that how we'll do this? Okay. Well, you've got me on the agenda first, so I guess I will make my way from there front.
Mayor, come on down.
Come on down. And I would like to ask my family to join me, if they would, because of them, I get the opportunity to do this job. They are my support system, and they are the loves of my life. So I would like to ask my husband Doug Smith, he calls himself diversity. And I'd like to ask my daughter-in-law Ruth Sanders and my sweet grandmom Ty to join me. All of this stuff that we work so hard on, all of this stuff that we work so hard on, and that we plan for, and we try to bring fruition, and we think for future generations. I'm dealing with that little boy right there, his little brother, and I've got another little grandson and granddaughter coming up. So we don't do this for ourselves. We don't do what we do for today. We do what we do for generations from now. So I'd like to ask y'all to come stand with me. Come over here. They are so supportive, and I could not do this without the support and help of my families.
All right, Mayor, if you would, raise your right hand. I, Julie Smith.
I, Julie Smith.
I'll read it all in the e-.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sure you're gonna take you, Rob, to meet the city of Tifton.
We hope. I, Julie Smith, Assistant of the City of Tifton, Georgia, and being a public official of the city of Tifton, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Tifton, that I will faithfully perform my duties as mayor of this city. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, or any public subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. As the elected representative for the city of Tifton, I swear that I have been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of the state and the city charter of the city of Tifton. Do you swear or affirm?
I swear.
All right, Mayor, if you would, just sign this for me, please.
Does this make it official?
It does.
Yay! Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, it's time for my favorite Georgia fan, Jack Falk.
My family prefers to stay in the background, but I have a granddaughter that doesn't like to stay in the background, and she's just like me. So she's gonna stand with me.
That sounds fine. You're a lucky young lady.
Also in LSU, I picture her in an LSU cheerleader outfit, but we won't go there.
We can get a convo here, sort of way. All right, Jack, if you'd raise your right hand.
I, Jack Falk, Assistant of the City of Tifton, Georgia, and being a public official of the city of Tifton, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, the Charter of the City of Tifton, that I will faithfully perform my duties as council member of this city. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, or any public subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. As the elected representative from District Two of the city of Tifton, I swear that I have been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution, laws of the state, and the city charter of the city of Tifton. Do you swear or affirm?
I swear.
All right, sir. Sign down there on that line. Congratulations. I am J. Hall, Assistant of the City of Tifton, Georgia, and being a public official of the city of Tifton, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter of this city of Tifton, that I will faithfully perform my duties as council member of this city. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, or any public subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. As the elected representative from District Four of the city of Tifton, I swear that I have been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution, the laws of the state, and the city charter of the city of Tifton. Do you swear or affirm?
I swear.
All right, sir. All right, sign here, and you're in.
MJ, you didn't tell us you were left-handed. That's kind of, there's some.
Way to go, free him, huh?
Uh-huh, yeah. You and Pete Prisinski all know about all that. Jack's left-handed, too? Oh, Lord. Okay. Yeah, I should've known, never mind.
Left and right.
All right, the next item on our agenda is selection of a vice mayor, and per our city charter, we are required to select a vice mayor. The council selects a vice mayor to serve a two-year term, and Wes Ayers has served for the last two years and done an incredible job. So Wes, I want to thank you for your service in that capacity. I cannot make a motion, so I'll need one of the other council members to make a motion concerning an appointment of our vice mayor.
Mayor, I move that Wes Ayers be appointed vice mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, you sure?
Okay.
You will think about it?
Well, you know, if I change my mind, I'll let you know.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor for reappointing Wes Ayers, who was councilman representing District One, as our new vice mayor, to continue his service? All those who are in agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
We're very proud of you. Okay, so we are well on our way, and the year's off to a good start. The next item on our agenda is a presentation. Thad Wright, I saw Thad in the audience earlier, there he is. Thad, if you'd like to come up to the podium here, Thad is with the U.S. Census Bureau, and he's going to talk to us about the 2020 census, which is so incredibly important to our state, our community, our state, and our nation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, distinguished guests, and citizens of Tifton County, Tifton. My name is Thad Wright. I am a member of the U.S. Census Bureau. My role with the Census Bureau is partnership specialist. That means I work and coordinate throughout southeastern Georgia through multiple counties and cities to help out with their census, specifically advising in the role of their complete count committees. Tifton, Tiff County, has a fantastic complete count committee. Chairman from county, Marion Jordan, county manager over there, is doing a bang-up job, and I'd like to acknowledge that. So I normally would've reached out to you guys sooner, but I haven't had to. I do cover 25 counties, and the fact that I could take my time getting to you guys is just testimony to how great you guys are actually doing. You guys have a fantastic Chamber of Commerce, fantastic organizations within your communities, and I believe that has a lot to do with the leadership here in this county. So thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Council. So since 1790, the Census Bureau, well, specifically the U.S. government, has attempted to count everyone on American soil. 2020 will be no different. Every 10 years, we count those who are breathing, and those, and it is by that count that we actually determine how the money is allocated. If we look at the U.S. Constitution, we will see that all funds raised by direct taxes or representation thereof are actually derived by the decennial, which is every 10 years. So this head count that we are about to do April 1st, which is right around the corner, and we will actually start sending out stuff currently, as well as March 12th will be our first miller, will actually drive our programs for the next decade. So what are some of those programs? Well, it's your Title I. It is your roads. It is your EMS. It is your senior citizen centers. It is your Head Start programs. If it comes from the Fed, or if it comes from the state, or if it's a grant, it probably got here based off its census. So in order to foster quick facts and actually look at some of these numbers and think about what it means to this community. One, one in three people in this area, well, one in three houses is owned, which means two out of three are renters. And renters typically don't necessarily respond to the same rate of census return as homeowners. Two, we have a lot of economically challenged individuals within the city of Tifton, and those who face poverty or are economically challenged don't typically respond. Those who are in most need are least likely to respond. So we allocate $675 billion nationwide to be divided by 330 million people across the United States. The only way to do that is from the U.S. Census. So we are asking you, as well as the members of this community, members of this room, to encourage everyone to respond. April 1st is the official census day, but the time to engage is now. We want to complete an accurate count, count everybody wants, count them only once, and count them in the right place. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you so much. And this, to reiterate Thad's comments, every dollar that comes into this community from our government is connected to our census. So it's so very important, as we talk to our neighbors, our friends, our fellow church members, if we run into someone in the grocery store, any way that we can communicate to those within our sphere of influence to ask them to please. You can do everything online. There's also a paper census that you can complete. Please complete this, it's so very important. You heard some of the examples, some of the programs that our census is tied to. If we took any one of those programs away from this community, or the funding that we received is diminished because we don't have an accurate and complete count, somebody is not going to be the beneficiary, and our community hurts as a result of that. So please share the word about the census. Let's be leaders and examples in that. We do have an incredible complete count. Marion Jordan, who is with, she's the county clerk with Tiff County, is doing an incredible job. She has a great cross-section of representatives on that committee. There are representatives from AVAC, from the industries, from the city, from the chamber, I mean, you name it, and they're covered there within that committee. So it's just so very important. So I appreciate you being here with us this evening to share that information. I know you've spoken to the Chamber of Commerce and several of the other civic groups in the area, so please, the census is very, very serious and very important to Tiff County and the city of Tifton, so I encourage everyone to respond. Any questions of Thad? While he's here, he's a wealth of information. He's the man, so if you have any questions or comments.
I do have one question. Thad, you did say that there are areas of our community that are very hard to get to. Will there be people knocking on doors, going out to these homes, and trying to obtain that information?
Yes, Vice Mayor. So as of March 12th, we will start sending out millers. There will be a total of five millers that actually go out. The fourth one will be a tear-off and return. They will encourage individuals to go online, first and foremost, which will be the first time we actually try to do decennial via that format. The U.S. Census does multiple surveys throughout the decade, so it's not the first time we've asked people to go online, but it is the first time we'll ask people to do that for the decennial. That being said, after the fifth miller goes out and we still don't get a response, we will do non-response follow-up. We are currently hiring for non-response follow-up at $15 an hour. Those jobs are available at 2020census.gov, but we will do what we can to actually foster a complete and accurate count. The real crux of the matter comes down to momentum. If we don't get good momentum going into April 1st, we're not going to get the count to where it should be, to what the people in the county deserve.
Mayor, Council, I do want to add, Jessica has, from the city, she is our appointee on that committee and is in tune with what's going on. We're working very, very hard, two things, language barrier, and number two, spreading the message that this does not have anything to do with law enforcement. So our residents do not need to be scared, and the committee's going to work real hard on these pockets that we need to reach out to. So I want to share that with you.
Excellent, very good, good point. Any other questions, comments for Thad? Thank you, Thad, we appreciate you being here this evening. Appreciate your hard work, too.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. All right, we are now into the new business section of our agenda, and I'd like to call Mr. Bruce Green to come forward, our urban redevelopment agency and South Tifton Redevelopment Plan. We have updates for that. Our agency's been working diligently, so Bruce, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think in your package you have two documents. You have a summary report of the activities of the Urban Redevelopment Agency from July to December of this year, and then you also have a list of a couple of recommendations that we feel like the council may want to consider in the next month or so to come. To start off with, to tell you that since July, when you all appointed our Urban Redevelopment Agency, and we actually have, I believe, three members of our board, Councilman Hall, Abby, and Vivian is our chair, anybody? So we have a few of our board members here tonight, and they've been incredibly helpful in getting our project going in South Tifton. And I actually have also a slide in just a moment that'll show the project areas that we're working on. But to go back a moment, we, when we first were organized, we began to help the neighborhood groups that came out in the 2018 year to look at the organization of a preservation alliance that was not only for South Tifton in the city limits, but it was also including Phillipsburg and Unionville. The county heard from that group, and I was there to kind of help them as well, and there seems to be movement towards the county looking at creating a historic preservation commission of their own, which will help Phillipsburg and Unionville, and that shores up the south side of South Tifton, along 17th Street going southward. So that's a big step. And we took our board on an orientation tour. They got to see the district as, and I chuckle a moment because that was the district as we knew it at that time, since today, we have discovered that there is also an extension of the URA that in 2009, the then council included an area going out Ferry Lake, so that we'll need to adjust our, the map was adjusted, and the city attorney and I, and Jessica can all get together and make sure that our maps are aligned, because one of the recommendations I'm about to ask is that the council consider aligning the urban redevelopment map area with the South Tifton Redevelopment Plan. There's a little bit of a difference going to the west, that we need to include that in the official map of the urban redevelopment area. But with that said, our city clerk has worked so diligently on the process of putting out a request for proposals to different developers and builders for the area that we previously called Captain's Point, and as we said in our staff meeting this morning, we no longer refer to that as Captain's Point, because that doesn't exist anymore. So it's the Old Omega Road Site, is what we're calling the site. And then from that, and this Thursday, the staff and council has been invited, URA, we will hear four different firms present to the group, and then we will in turn, through a process determined, which we think would be the best group, to build new housing on that site. And council is certainly aware that the additional acreage was picked up, and you'll see that in a moment. All right, so what you're seeing now, and the public can see, there's a highlighted area with the black line around it. That's actually the area that's been identified through Jessica's work with the Regional Planning Commission for the Community Home Investment Program, or what we call CHIP. And that'll be a set aside of roughly $300,000, if we are awarded that, for homeowners, long-term homeowners, and when we say that, meaning that we expect those people to live in those homes for a while. This is not for landlords, you know, this is not for, you know, people that are coming and going. This is for longtime residents in that area. But the money would be made available on a competitive basis to do major adaptive rebuilding, if you will, of that home, whether it's a new roof, whether it's good windows, energy efficiency, a new front porch. And this very afternoon, Moses and I spent time writing that entire area and working with the map work that Jessica's done, as well as Lee, our community development staff person. She put together an incredible database. So as of this afternoon, Moses was doing that, and we can identify all those things that are necessary, that the regional commission will need in order to make this grant work. So that's one.
What are the little dots that are on this?
Okay, Jonathan, if you can go back. The dots in this particular photograph indicate owner occupied dwellings.
I thought that might be.
And we will actually bring to you at next council meeting, we'll have a more detailed map that has layers. It'll have whether or not it's standard, substandard, or dilapidated. We were doing that this afternoon in a windshield survey. But the good news is, in that multiple-block area, we do have a lot of standard and well-maintained homes. There are just a few that are dilapidated and some that are substandard, but it's the substandard ones that if they're owner occupied, could be eligible for this grant.
Excellent.
So that's a significant project, and again, we are competing with other communities in the state for this money, and I cannot say thank you enough to Jessica for all the work that she has done to help us get going in this direction. Okay. There's another image that you will see, and you probably on your computer screen can see it a little better, but the green area is the South Tifton Redevelopment Area, the much larger area. And up on that upper right, that's Horizon Mill Site, and the far bottom tag that you see, that's Matt Wilson School. So you get the idea of the number of blocks that that spans. So that orange area, you see it identified as the city's CHIP grant. That was that area you just saw in a much closer review. If you look in the red, there is a part to the middle, and it says the Old Omega Site One. That is the site that we will hear the RFP presentations this Thursday, the four different companies. The to your right in the image is Old Omega Site Two. That's the land that the city just purchased. That has not yet been cleared, some of the vacant trailers and manufactured homes that are there, as well as working with the existing owners of some of those sites, not the site, but the individual improvements upon the site. So that'll be a little bit more complex process, but you begin to see. And then there's a smaller square that you see directly in front of Matt Wilson School. That is the land that the Tiff County Board of Education purchased this past year and cleared, and that, the city is applying for a CDBG grant for a particular community center that could be built there. So again, all of these are competitive, but with these RFPs, it's a little bit different because they bring the money with them. There's a low-income housing tax credit, which is kind of complicated, but the gist of it is, they seek outside investors who invest the money through these companies, and they in turn have the liquidity or the capacity to build this housing. And we will keep you informed on that, but the ranges, I can tell you, and the proposals run from 8.5 million to 12 million. So we're talking about a sizable investment over the next two years or so, and we were cautioned by these groups that this may take two and a half to three years to go through the whole process to be able to get that money here in Tifton. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer, but I think what I wanted you to be proud of is that, look at what's going on already in that green area that this council and the previous council were so supportive of. So we're excited, and I'm going to end with this, that I know some of you were there at the ribbon-cutting and dedication of our new office, but I'll tell you what, I've worked in many places, including in Atlanta, and there is nothing any better than our urban redevelopment office, and it clearly shows how creative this community can be to take a vacant building this summer, and thanks to this fella right here, and put the right people, two incredible firemen did the carpentry work, and if you have not been, I invite the public and the rest of the council that haven't had a chance to stop by, to just come see it. We call it the TUIR Office, Tifton Urban Redevelopment Agency Office, but it's also the design cottage, and someone in this audience tonight said, "I want to come see you and pull up some information on the books and the design ideas that you have," and that's what it's about. If you have a dream, if you have an idea of doing something with a home or land that you own, you come to us, and we'll provide the information and the stimulation, and these folks right back here will provide the permit. So it's.
Let's go ahead and stop, Bruce.
That's right. So there was a strategy in all of this. So we call it the softer side of the city.
There you go.
So anyway, it's really, it's working. We've had people stop by, and they are so excited about this, so it's right smack dab in the middle of all this. So I can't say enough to this council and to the city about how forward-thinking you are, and that's why this is going to work. It's going to take tons of hard work. Thank you to Jessica, thank you to Pete, thanks to Rob for all the legal advice that he gives us, but we're excited.
Well, I can tell you what, this is, this is something that we've all been working on for a long time, and to have you stand before us this evening and get to this point with this is just so exciting, and talking about the great things to happen in our community in 2020, this is at the head of the list. I'm just thrilled about this. And, you know, this is something that we've worked very closely with the property owners, with the neighbors. We've listened, we've taken our time, we've not rushed into anything. We've wanted to be proactive, not reactive. This is our community. This is just as important a part of our community as any address in the city of Tifton. And so I'm just thrilled with what's going to be happening, the partners that we've created with our school system, with the new urban redevelopment agency, with so many that have just come and said, "How are y'all doing this? I'm really interested in this." And recently, we had an opportunity to have several communities in from across the state to go through training, which was held at Abby's office, and they, Bruce made a little presentation about what we're doing with the urban redevelopment area, and they were just amazed, and then had lots and lots of questions and took lots of notes. So I think, again, Tifton is leading the way with regard to this type of development. And, you know, this is something that we've worked very closely with the property owners, with the neighbors. We've listened, we've taken our time, we've not rushed into anything. We've wanted to be proactive, not reactive. This is our community. This is just as important a part of our community as any address in the city of Tifton. And so I'm just, just thrilled with what's going to be happening. The partners that we've created with our school system, with the new urban redevelopment agency, with so many that have just come and said, how are y'all doing this? I'm really interested in this. And recently, we had an opportunity to have several communities in, from across the state, to go through training, which was held at Abby's office. And they, Bruce made a little presentation about what we're doing with the urban redevelopment area. And they were just amazed and then had lots and lots of questions and took lots of notes. So, so I think, again, Tifton is leading the way with regard to this type of development. I'm just, I'm thrilled. And the cottage, the design cottage is amazing. Bruce has every resource you could ever imagine packed into that little office in there. I don't know how you got all that in there. But, and then like you said, the, the, the great thing is you just walk right across the parking lot right there. And there's, there's permitting and zoning and H P C representing, anything that you need, all of it's right there. We wanted to be, this council wanted to be very user-friendly when it came to, to development and residential development, economic development for our community. And this is just another way to make that happen. So thank you, Bruce, for this presentation. I know, do y'all have any questions? I know M J serves on the urban redevelopment. Vivian, I'm so proud to have you here tonight and the work that you're doing. And as the chair, we're very much appreciative of that. Any comments, questions of Bruce while, while he's here?
Mayor, just I wanted to make, just informational. And thank you for those kind comments. And I'm proud to hear Bruce say that because that means a lot. That's the nucleus that we always talked about. But I want to go a five thousand feet. And I think we had a breakthrough with Jessica and Abby working on the maps and the designations. I think we, our, our boundaries have always been loose. For the past four years, I've been trying to determine where the boundaries are. When you talk, when you hear enterprise zone, that's kind of iffy. When you talk about opportunity zone, that's really off, it's just all over the board. When you talk about D D A and the Main Street boundaries, what does that mean? So as we incorporate these different type of boundaries, which are solid, that match up with the development plans, which match up to CHIP, which match up to everything else, pretty soon, we'll be able to light up a board. And any person that wants to know boundaries on where they are for incentives or for property, we're going to be able to delineate that. And I think that's a special time for us because that gives us the assurance, we know what we're talking about. And then inside those boundaries, what it means for either a developer or a person wanting to come or stay in Tifton. So I'm really excited about that. And I think we, I saw that this morning when they were finishing. Abby needs that desperately, then the downtown area is just the same. But we have had a breakthrough and I, I clearly see that as we, we specialize these maps and they all are intertwined together. And I think it's, it'll be great for us.
Where are we on the, I know that the, several of the residents, like you said, came to us and then also came to the county and asked about the creation of a historic district. Like you said, not only within the city limits, but to extend beyond. Where are we in that assessment of the paperwork that we need to do as far as the cataloging of all the properties and getting that in to designate that district? Do you know?
I'll, I'll respond and then I'm going to lean back and look at Danny back here too. But we have a nineteen eighty-two survey that was done, including the city limits of South Tifton. However, if you do the math, that's thirty-plus years ago. So the rule of thumb is a building fifty years old or older. So buildings that might not have been listed in that first survey should be re-adressed. And Danny and I have talked that right now, the city of Tifton cannot apply for certain funds from the Department of Natural Resources, the Historic Preservation Division, because our surveys are not up to date. Now, I, I bring you good news and the U R A knows this because we have had Dr. Eric Larson from the School of Rural Studies come talk to us. He is incredibly excited and has committed an entire class of his students to work with the U R A and work with the city over the next semester. And there are four products, basically, that we will ask those students to give the city. One is an updated historic survey, which in turn, to answer your question specifically, we are poised, because it is the city's Historic Preservation Commission that is charged statutorily to do this work, but we need to give them help. And so we can take what we have, thank goodness for Cherry Player saving that original survey. She spotted it in a box out at the old complex and saved it. And it literally is just volumes of work that almost got. Yeah, went astray. So anyway, we have that. And two other things, a part of the information that Jessica and all of the staff will need for these grants that we're applying for, the students will help us with that. And then here's another piece, the cultural and the historic part of that, of sitting down with people that are, if you will take it this way, seniors or that have collective memory of what South Tifton was. We want to gather that data because that's incredibly important. When we eventually go for national register designation, you have to write that up as a part of it. So we, we are lucky to have these rural studies students get involved with us. And so hopefully, in the next three to four months, we can have those students come before this council and literally deliver their gifts, which are very useful tools that we need to produce all this stuff.
Well, it's not bespoke of partnership in this.
Absolutely. It is town and gown at its best. It absolutely is.
And this is Councilman Terrell's district. And so you talk about he has some stories. We need to make sure we interview him because he's got some great stories. I don't know if they're.
I've already told him, I want to videotape him. I know. Well, thank you all.
I'd like to have one question, Bruce. The CHIP housing boundaries, are we going to be able to increase those south? I guess so that we can incorporate the Old Omega Sites?
Well, actually, like on the Old Omega Site, that's going to be a different housing development. So we wouldn't necessarily need to move in that direction because it's for rehabilitation of homeowner properties. So if you recall, on the twelve or so acres, the five-point something and the six-point something, once it's all cleared, there won't be any homeowner occupied residences on that land.
They don't have a down payment assistance program with CHIP?
I'll let Jessica.
They discontinued that, they don't anymore. But we used to.
I know they used to. Okay, well, that answers my question.
And you wouldn't want to do that site because they don't own the land, they only own their home. And you have to own, really, it's for a brick and mortar type. It's not for housing that's in a mobile home. Because anytime it's valued over, the rehab's over eighty-five hundred dollars and it's a, I mean, eighty-five hundred dollars and it's a mobile home, it, I mean, they, you could do that, they own their house and they had a mobile home. What they would do is do a reconstruction. They would remove the mobile home and build an actual house there.
Gotcha.
So, and, and the reason, I know the map looked really bad, but I wanted to make sure that we chose an area where there were enough owner occupied units. Because I know there were a lot of rentals, you know, if you look at it, there's two, the Housing Authority and the, the other trailer park across the street. We have a, a pretty good, it'll do about five to six homes is what we're hoping.
Okay, good.
We just need to educate on this one. There's nothing worse than turning back CHIP monies. I think we have all the ingredients, but I think it's important for us to, just like the census, we have got to educate our residents that this could be great, forty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to improve their home. So three hundred thousand dollars should go a long way, but we can make a certain, certainly a great impact in these certain areas.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions, comments about the redevelopment or CHIP? Anything? All right, thank you, Bruce. Thank you very much. Good work. All right, I'm going to call on Danny Wallace to come and talk to us about implementing city design standards. This is something we've been talking about for a little while.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, as Danny takes his spot, I thought it was appropriate to pull this item forward. I know we've been talking about it. We've been circling this for a little while. We've been, we really have been hinting around some designs. And again, it's not the intent of us to put so much red tape and regulations, but give us the assurance that we're securing what the city of Tifton looks like and especially with properties and how it fits into the aesthetic. So there's a, there's been some really deep discussion at the state level on this. And I think we're going to see probably some legislation on this. So it really is a good time to talk through it. And if it's your desire, if you want to talk about design standards, how that could impact us from a very, you know, low level to a, to a higher level and some, whether it's commercial or residential, now's the time to do that. And I asked Danny to come and just kind of talk through that. He's provided you three examples of ordinances that are in place. So it is, it's your time, if you want to continue to discussions, this will be the appropriate time to do so. Danny?
Mayor, Council, first of all, I'd just like to say I appreciate your efforts with the U R A. And having Bruce over there next to us has really been nice. He, we're, we're a bunch of left-brain folks in the community development. And it's great to have that creative side and he's really helped spruce up the place. So we do appreciate that a lot and the community does as well. So like Pete said, we, we brought you some examples of some current ordinances that are out there in, in some of the cities in Georgia. And I've contacted a few of these people and they, they, they don't have any problems with them. They understand, they, they want their community to grow in a certain way. And these were all taken, put before the community, the community supported them and they adopted them. Now, in looking at these, they vary widely. So we could definitely make something fit for Tifton. It could be very minimal or it could be, I didn't include Atlanta's. Atlanta's was huge. I mean, they have everything in there spelled out. So you can get as detailed or as minimal as you would like. And I, you know, I'd love to be a part of it as well. I have some, just from being out there, you know, pounding the pavement, I have some suggestions to offer from developers and people in the community as well.
Okay. Gentlemen, what are your thoughts?
Would it be based on the zoning, like for instance, like an R twelve standard would be different than an R sixteen or whatever?
You could, you, you very well could. You could create your own designation. You could say, this is the art district. You can have it line up with the comprehensive plan and say, this is what you need to do in the urban commercial corridor. Or this needs to happen in all residential neighborhoods. Or it could be citywide. It, it is strictly up to you all.
We're, we're, we're creating from scratch how, you know, the.
And you can address anything from buildings, walkability, bicycling, you can address all of that.
We, we've got to do something. There's a building going up and y'all know which one I'm talking about. And when you ride by and think, oh my God, how did that happen right here in this area? It's like, well, because there's no real standard. Now, you know, people get upset, well, you can't tell me what I want to do. And especially if you live in an area that has an H O A, they really get upset. But all it is, if they will step back, is to protect everybody there. So you can't have something thrown up. So we, we've got to develop something to keep some kind of standard and not just have these off-the-wall things that bring everything in the neighborhood down.
Well, as you travel around the different communities over the course of the next couple of weeks, just look at their main corridors and, and, you know, does it, is it an inviting, attractive place that you would want to, you know, stay and do business or that attracts your attention? Or is it a place you, you know, kind of scared of? You know, does, it doesn't look as attractive. And, and I think as we move forward, again, into a new year, making sure that we have a strong foundation for good business development and with business being whether it's a neighborhood or a commercial business or whatever, I think it's important that we look at this. And so just kind of be thinking about this and taking notes. I know Pete's going to talk to us about an upcoming retreat. I think that would be a good time to really delve into this. Give us all time to make some notes and think through this. Look through and read. You've provided some, some great examples from other communities of, and how they handle things. And so we can, you know, we can have further discussion. So any other questions or comments as we start this conversation?
Is there a way to, and I don't know if each of us looking at our individual districts, would it help us a little bit as far as zoning for each district? And seeing, I know my district, District One has about four or five categories just within itself. And just seeing where those all lie within my district. Is there a way to, to, to separate that and get me a map of that?
I, I think it's a great point. I think we still have a little too much with, with regard to zoning. So we have R ten, R eight, R ten, R fourteen, right in the same pod. So if we could clean that up, that's consistency. Because if, if you want to do designs and it goes along with the zoning, then obviously, we could do that as layers. But yes, we could see that. And I think it's, it's really time to look at the.
I, I would like that because at the end of the day, I think my, my district has pretty much some melting pot of different zonings. And I just, you know, if we're going to make a design, I mean, obviously, we need to, I need to know where. I don't want to sit here and put a blanket design standard on my entire district when it wouldn't necessarily help us all.
Well, I think we almost have to treat this like the, the U R A is looking at the urban redevelopment area where you've, you've got these sort of layers that interact with each other, you know, with regard to zoning or aesthetics or, you know, whatever it may be. So I think the, the point for this evening is, is be thinking about it. This is a conversation, and we're not going to come up with something very quickly. We don't need to rush into anything. We need to really examine this and, and learn from other communities. We've got great resources with our South Georgia Regional Commission that can help us with this. I think we need to pull out our comprehensive plan. Everything goes back to that, you know, so let's go back and compare, you know, that with the comp, what we're thinking about with our comp plan and how it relates and where development is proposed to happen in the community. I think we need to look at the whole, the whole shoot match, so.
All right, good, we'll, we'll take it to the next step and thank you for doing that, Danny.
Any other questions? Okay, so you'll get for, for the districts. Can you get the zoning and, and the layout of?
Absolutely. All, all of our stuff is online. And, and you can view every bit of it, right down to the water lines, the sewer lines. So all the zoning, the comprehensive plan, yes, sir, it's, it's on our website. I'd be happy to just keep with me and all.
What I like to do is that if.
Absolutely.
It's, it's.
I've got a map for the whole thing.
Yeah, if we could take.
Of the zoning map, though? I mean, I got a district map, but I don't have a zoning.
It's zoning, everything's zoning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would like to do your district and we could put the zoning.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, Jack, I think you guys are all smarter than to do your own district zoning. I don't, I don't really want to look at yours and get my, you know, oh my goodness.
I'll have you look at it, it's a small thing or not, you're welcome to help me in my district.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments for Danny? All right. All right, our next items all relate to resolutions. Rob, do you want to talk about the utility easement along forty-one and twentieth Street?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is a resolution authorized in the proceeding with a condemnation procedure for an easement. Attached to the resolution is, is a plat of survey. And to get you allocated, this is over there where the, on twentieth Street and forty-one, where that ice machine is, it's on that corner there. And basically, what the city is seeking to acquire is an easement to improve the, the gas and water lines there. And so you will have a twenty-foot easement across twentieth Street and then a ten-foot easement that's going north on forty-one. And basically, you know, once the, this extension is made, it's going to connect two water systems. It's going to provide better circulation, coordination throughout the system. Also going to provide better pressure in, in water volume for customers and for, for fire. So this is something that we need to do. And actually, what you'll do, this resolution will authorize a, a declaration of taking. We'll file a petition for condemnation and then proceed to apply the easement.
Okay. Is that your, is that your district, Jack? That's your district, isn't it?
Forty-one and.
Twenty, okay. Okay, any questions about that? All right, Jessica, do you want to talk, well, we talked about the CHIP application, but we do need to create a resolution to that effect. Do you, is there anything else you need to add on that for the two, a block of this CHIP?
No, what Bruce discussed is to just finalize, give us approval, the city approval to apply for that.
Okay, and will the, let's see. No, that's not, never mind, okay. All right, then you want to go ahead and talk about the updated schedule fees?
Okay, I included that in there. This was at the last meeting, you know, the garbage contract was approved, but we didn't really do anything to formally track the increase. So I just decided to send it to our department heads. They reviewed it. We made sure everything was correct based off the last time it was approved. So you are looking at all fees, but the, really the only reason that we're bringing it forward is because of the garbage fees. I believe D D A has some updates for their rental would be the only, only thing then.
Okay, all right. And that, that list of those fees and what they apply, which department, that type thing is in your packet. So we've got that. Does anyone have any questions or comments on those fees?
I'm curious about asbestos in the, I mean, it's, it's fifty-five dollars a ton versus other solid waste is only forty-two, which, are we okay with it? You know, asbestos, you mentioned asbestos, it's like, oh my God, you know, you can't touch it. And it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of different, you know, I mean, forty-two to fifty-five ain't a great deal.
Asbestos has to have a manifest with it, meaning where it came from, how it was properly done. Usually, it'll come in wet. So it is considered a special waste. So you'll see a, obviously, a larger tipping fee for that.
And my question, is it enough? Only fifty-five versus regular waste is forty-two. Fifty-five doesn't sound like a whole lot when you're dealing with something hazardous as that.
Yeah, I haven't scanned on, on, on what asbestos is at the gates, but we could sure take a look at it.
I'd be curious though what others, you know, it's, it's some dumb stuff.
Well, yeah, we could sure take a look at it. But nothing else changed. And I, again, I, I love the summary because we've never had. But nothing else changed, and I, again, I love the summary, because we've never had anything like this to show, if someone wanted to see the fees, we have two pages that it's all inclusive, so it was in different forms, it was in different, so customer service could have this at their desk, and it'd be easy tool to look at.
Just get information.
And these are the current prices?
These are current, nothing else, really, nothing else has changed.
Would it change if we did anything to asbestos, would that need to, I know we're the administrators of landfill, would that need to be discussed with county?
I'll prob, if it's okay, probably make a note, look at some examples, but that along with, you know, the water and sewer, making sure we start budget discussions, February, March, if there's any changes to any of that, that's probably the time to bring it forward for discussion.
One other question on the water deposit, do we require a deposit from everybody, or is it, you've got certain credits, you don't have to put a deposit down?
It's for everybody.
Everybody gets it, and is it kept forever, or is it returned at some point?
Yeah, the light, your last bill can go towards your deposit, but then, if there's anything else, I return.
If I'm here for thirty years, you're going to keep the fifty dollars until I decide to... Well, somebody, somebody was told if they get refunded after a certain period of time, and I said, well, I'll see if that's true, so.
I've heard of that before.
Evidently, that's not true.
What we've run into, especially here, is when people move out, then we're stuck with the bill, so the security deposit stays in the rears until they move, but we do have a lot of people that move quickly, and we're stuck with the remaining bill, so that's what the security deposit's really for.
Could you tie something maybe to, like if they have homestead, that if you homestead your home for X amount of time, you get that back?
That sounds like that would be a lot of work to do, because then they'd have to be checking and confirming, do you still, are you still the rightful owner, did you deed it to someone else, that just sounds like that would be, it's not, I've not heard anybody complain about the deposit, getting the deposit back.
I know they have, yeah.
And they just thought they were getting it back. I've seen in other places I've lived, if your credit is such, you don't have to put a deposit down, I mean, you just, you know, if you've got a credit, then you don't, then you don't go through the process of the administrative process, keeping fifty dollars.
Okay. So, you want Pete to check on the asbestos aspect, is there anything else that anyone wants these fees? Any other questions? Do you want him to look into the deposit stuff?
No, it's not, it's not that big of a deal.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments about the updated fee schedule? Thank you for putting that all together, Jessica, that, I think that will be very, very helpful, and provide us with some consistency on what's going on. All right, Jessica, you've got the next items, they're all resolutions for an amended alcohol license, you want to go over those real quick?
Pizza Hut, I included the information, staff is recommending that, they had a new manager. Crazy Loon's Saloon, the previous owner passed away last year, so they are updating the ownership, the manager is remaining the same. Forty-one and Main, that's a new manager, that is currently staying with the same licensee, but the management of that has changed, and staff is recommending approval of all of those.
Okay, any questions?
And we have those on the special call meetings, that's a twenty-twenty license that we can get on issued quickly.
Okay, all right, any questions or comments about those applications? All right, we are now down to our board report, and Jessica does a terrific job of providing information on that. Obviously, tonight is a workshop, I did not mention that at the beginning of the meeting, so we won't be doing any actual voting until we have the special call meeting, and that's for some of the resolutions that we talked about. So, you've got those board applications on file, and we can, we can deal with those at our regular meeting, that will be coming up soon. City manager reports, what you got, Pete?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, just a few things, I do have the tickets to MLK breakfast, so I'll be getting those out, or at least a message if anyone would like to attend with you, but I do have the tickets for that, this Thursday at two-thirty at the P D, we will have the penning ceremony for Chief Hyman, and I know that's on the calendar for this week, so that's going to be an exciting time for us. Jeff shared some facts with us this morning at our staff meeting that I wanted to pass on to you, and I always do this at the end after Christmas, but E S G clocked nine hundred and seven man-hours putting up lights, Christmas lights and Christmas decorations this season. So, we, and we could track that, you, it's just, you know, it's really amazing when you talk about how much really it costs and how much time it takes to do that. Jeff, thanks to E S G and your crew and staff for doing that on time, and we hit the button, the lights come on, and then we got to take it all down, so, big expenses, and we do, obviously, like to do it right, so it's a great fact that I wanted to share. Also, great, Emily shared today that we had no employee accidents for December, and again, that's a long month, and with no accidents, that's something that we're starting to really pay attention to, is the safety aspects of operations.
Four years later, thank you, I appreciate that.
And then, lastly, at your desk, in the manila folder, I did leave retreat information for you, so if you'll please look at that, we do have a little time, but I'm in the process of planning that, but if you'll make some notes and return that to me, that'd be great, and then I'll share those details with you when we're ready to go, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, excellent. All right, any comments, questions of Pete, all these are the managers' reports. Okay, the next item on our agenda are mayor and council comments before we close out this meeting and call our special call meeting to order. M J, what we do at the end of each meeting is we just have comments that you can make regarding your district or yourself, or anything you'd like to share with the community, so we'll start with Councilman Fulk here, and then work our way through, and Jack?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank the residents of District Two for giving me the honor of serving them for another four years, I've enjoyed it, and I appreciate it, and I get vocal, much to the dismay of the mayor and now here, but that's just me, I'll tell you what I think, and I also appreciate Heywood coming tonight, and you know me, and I'll end, same way Ed Orgeron ends, with go Ty.
Johnny, would you punch him right there? Close to.
I'll punch him too, so.
Okay, never mind, all right, what you got, Force? What you got?
Well, I'd like to prepare a little bit, Mr. Hall, John and us, we look forward to working with you, and this is it. This is it.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, be careful what you wish, you might. But we look forward to working with you, and thank you for John.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Echo that, yes, yes. I'd like to echo the welcome, M J, we're glad to have you with us. I'd also like to invite everyone to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, we have a wonderful committee that works on this for us every year, the Prayer Breakfast will be held on Thursday, February the sixth, at the Leroy Rogers Senior Center, B J Smith does the catering, the food is always fabulous, we have a motivational speaker, and tickets are ten dollars, which basically covers the cost of the meal, there's no profit or anything from that, so, so I'd like to invite everyone to come out to that, I've got tickets if anyone would like to buy those, and come and join us. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Tony McBrayer and the audience with us this evening, Commissioner, we appreciate you being here, and always appreciate your interest in participating and helping us to bridge our gaps with the county and working together on that. I'd also like to just remind our community, and Heywood, I'm glad that you're here, I'm glad that Eve's here too, we got a, an email recently from a local resident who was just concerned about traffic safety, and sometimes, I know, especially during the holidays, we get busy, and you're in a hurry, and you forget to signal, or maybe you didn't see that stop sign, or that kind of thing, so I'd just like to encourage all of our residents to be courteous as you drive around our community, take your time, especially going through our school zones, we always tease Jack about safety, but he's right on the spot with the fact that we've got to be safe, and when we're driving around this community where we have children, we have the elderly, we have people, it's our job when we're behind the wheel to make sure that we are as safe as we can possibly be, we have an incredible police department, but they can't be everywhere to cite people when things happen, so if you have an issue with traffic problems, if you see kids driving the golf carts, call nine-one-one, and they'll dispatch an officer, if you see someone driving erratically, call nine-one-one, and they'll work with us to make sure that our police department is informed, and we can be as safe as we possibly can, so just want to remind everyone to be courteous and to be safe when you're out on the road.
I'm sorry, I don't want to drive or anything.
That's right, that's right, that's peanut butter and Jesus, and so, so be supportive of that, too. All right, Wes?
I would just like to echo the same sentiments as my colleagues here, M J, welcome aboard, got a lot to do, you'll know, just based on the little packet in front of you, that every meeting is something new, always be prepared. Also, Mayor and Councilman Fulk, congratulations on your victory as well, and also, thank you to the council for putting a vote of confidence in me becoming your Vice Mayor again, I appreciate that, it really means a lot to me, so, thank you.
All right, M J?
Yeah, and I would just like to thank the City of Tifton for electing me, and also, I guess, the people in District Four to believe in me and to be able to serve my community, I'm excited, love to see everybody here, and the good smiling faces in the beginning of the year, and I'm looking forward to a great four years with this council, and the people that are surrounded with me, so thank you all so much, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, okay. Unless there's anything else to come before us for our workshop, I will call this meeting adjourned, and we will go right into our special call meeting, we have just a few items on the agenda, as you can see, so this special call meeting is called to order, I will need to have a motion to approve the agenda that has been presented to us.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have, one, two, three, we have five items of new business, one is the approval for changing the January council meeting to Tuesday, January the twenty-first, our normal meeting would be on that Monday, which is MLK, and we need to all be sure to attend the programs that morning, and so, we'll need to move our meeting to Tuesday, the twenty-first, can I get a motion to that?
So moved.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Rob has already presented to us the information for the resolution authorizing a declaration of taking for utility easement along Highway Forty-one and Twentieth Street, so I will need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next two items relate to, excuse me, three items relate to the amended alcohol licensing, we can take those individually, can we take those together, Rob, and just do all three at one time? Okay.
So moved.
You want to do all three at one time?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we do need to go into executive session, I believe, for legal matters, so I will need a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll take about a two-minute break, and then we'll go into a quick executive session.